Hello and welcome to the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board Meeting. Would you all please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you, you may be seated. We're going to call the meeting to order. And want to remind that any citizen who wishes to speak to a consent or action item must complete the sign-in sheet that's in the lobby prior to the board's consideration of the agenda item. And it's really not a sheet, it's on the computer. And we have a lovely woman who will assist you with that. We do not have the National Anthem during the summer because kids are enjoying the summer. So we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and it will be led by Dr. Mallerwine, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools.
Please join me at the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a short video on the governing board procedures that will be played.
Welcome to the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board Meeting. We appreciate your interest in the district. The five elected governing board members served without compensation and volunteered countless hours. The president and the clerk of the board are elected in January. Under state law, the governing board may only discuss and vote on matters that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Agendas are posted a minimum of 24 hours in advance on the Mesa Public Schools website and in the Curriculum Services Center. Copies of tonight's agenda are located in the lobby. The public may speak on any item of business on the agenda that the board discusses or requires the board to take action. If you wish to comment on an action or discussion item, please complete a request to address the board form before the item is discussed. The form is located in the lobby. Members of the public will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak once recognized by the governing board president. Please state your name before you speak. We ask that all speakers show respect and courtesy to others. During the second regular meeting of each month, the agenda will include a call to the public, which is an opportunity to speak to the governing board about a school district matter that is not on the agenda. Please submit a request to address the board form to participate in the call to the public. If you would like the board to consider adding an item to a future agenda, you may submit your request in writing to the board at least five working days before that meeting. The superintendent or governing board president will consider your request. Thank you for your attendance and involvement in tonight's meeting.
General Governing Board Meeting. The board has important business to conduct that is essential to the operation of the district. Everyone is welcome to express ideas or concerns to the board in accordance with the agenda. The poster in the boardroom posted there on the side describes positive behaviors expected and behaviors that cannot be tolerated. Please speak and act respectfully and please, no side conversations, no reactive comments because they are disruptive. It is the governing board president's responsibility to maintain proper order so the board can conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner. If you are disruptive or interfere with the conduct of the meeting, you will be asked to leave so the board can conduct the business of the district. The next item on the agenda is the review of the agenda. And consent agenda items are approved with one motion. And as I check the request to address the board, we have one citizen who would like to talk about Agenda Item 6G, which is our agreement with the City of Mesa on the K-Ready program. So, Mrs. Kirby, we will pull Agenda Item 6G from the consent agenda and place it on the action item agenda. If a board member would like to pull a consent agenda item, would you please let me know right now? Okay, Ms. Walden, Ms. Davis, thank you very much. At this time, we'll have Dr. Forliss review our governing board calendar, which mercifully is pretty skinny this time of year.
Madam President, members of the board, yes, we do have a much skinnier agenda or calendar this time of the year. Our next regularly scheduled governing board meeting is July 9th. We will be starting at 5:00 for the public hearing on the proposed 2024-25 budget. And then at about 5:05, we will have our regularly scheduled governing board meeting. On July 23rd at 5:00 PM, our regular governing board meeting will begin again, 5:00 is our summer start time. After the regular meeting, we will go into executive session where we will begin to talk about my superintendent evaluation. On August 1st is a very special day in Mesa Public Schools, that is the first day of school. And August 13th, we return to our regular governing board meeting start time with at 5:00 for a study session on student presentations from what we have become to know as MPS Activate. At 6:30, our regular meeting will begin and after that meeting, there will be an executive session again to continue with the work of my evaluation. And then August 27th at 5:00 is a study session. That will be our ESSR report. That will be a culmination of lots of great information that governing board members have been asking and so you will see that report provided to you by Mrs. Holly Williams. And then at 6:30 will be our regularly scheduled governing board meeting. And that concludes the calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Forliss. Really excited about the August 13th meeting with our student presentations. That's going to be a very special study session. Our action item, action item number four is our personnel requests. Do I have a motion to accept the personnel requests including the addendum?
So moved.
Mrs. Davis has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Walden has seconded. It's been moved and seconded to accept the recommendations of the personnel requests including the addendum. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Kirby, would you please take our vote?
Kiana Sears votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Ms. Sears. With a vote of four yea and zero nay, we have approved the personnel requests. And with our personnel requests, we have some special assistant principals that we want to recognize at this time. So would you please join me in front of the dais?
So Madam President, members of the board and to our community, with your approval of the personnel agenda, you have approved the principal of the Alma Learning Center, who is Michael Karpinski. He is not able to be here this evening, he already had some travel plans. And an assistant principal who is transferring to Summit Academy, Joelle. And she will also be able to be introduced to you at a later time. But tonight, we do have a special guest with us. So I would like to invite Jose Esteban Ruiz up to the podium. Come on up. Jose is the incoming assistant principal at Carson Junior High. You can just hang out here for a minute. I'm going to brag on you for a minute and then you can go do the handshakes and all the good fun things and pictures and all, we'll make it official. So Jose is the incoming assistant principal at Carson Junior High School. He currently teaches AP Spanish at Arizona College Prep High School with the Chandler Unified School District. He also coaches and sponsors various clubs and sports. Jose began his career in education in 2017 with the Chandler Unified School District where he taught Spanish I and honors Spanish III at various schools. Jose holds a Bachelors of Arts degree in Spanish from Arizona State University, a Master of Education in Secondary Education from Grand Canyon University, and a Masters of Education in Educational Leadership from the Teachers College at Columbia University. So Jose, a big congratulations to you as you take on your new leadership role in Mesa Public Schools. And our governing board would love to congratulate you with a handshake. And then if you have loved ones with you, we'll invite you up for a group photo. So you'll start right here with Mrs. Walden. And I must say that we have a graduate of Westwood High School. And thank you, Mr. Ruiz, for coming back and choosing Mesa Public Schools. And I understand your wife graduated from Dobson High School. So Mesa Public Schools continues to shine its greatness. Thank you so much. If you would like, we're going to continue on with our meeting, but if you would like to celebrate elsewhere, we won't be sad.
So exciting to welcome a new administrator and to welcome someone back. Mr. Ruiz attended Carson Junior High. So he's coming back now as the leader of Carson Junior High. That says an awful lot about him and the district that he will serve. At this point, we come to our, in the agenda where we have our call to the public. And at this time, we have a video on our call to the public procedures and then we'll proceed with the public comment.
The governing board welcomes comments from the public on non-agenda items during the call to the public. Please remember, as a general rule, public comments will be limited to three minutes. And the duration of an open call to the public will be 15 minutes. The president may set specific time limits for speakers and the duration of the call to the public to maximize the opportunity for individuals to offer their viewpoints. Comments must pertain to a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the governing board. This is not an appropriate forum to complain about an employee, student, or others. Please use the procedures established in policy KLD for this purpose. State law prohibits board members from commenting on or discussing the matters presented at the end of the call to the public. The board may ask the superintendent to review the issue or place it on a future agenda. A board member may also briefly respond to criticism of a board member or the governing board. Thank you for allowing this meeting to be conducted in a peaceful and productive manner.
We have eight members of the public that would like to speak tonight. So we're going to allow two minutes per speaker. And that way, we'll have, we'll go a little bit over our 15-minute allotment, but we'll have a good time to hear from our public members. So I'm going to call you three at a time. And if you hear your name, would you please be ready to speak? And with each of the three groupings, we'll call your name. And if I mispronounce your name, I'm sorry. I'll try to make sure that I do pronounce it correctly. So our first three speakers will be Ed Steele, Barry Ketchum, and Kali Thunman.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendency. My name is Ed Steele. I wanted to share with you my perspective as a process engineer for many, many years as it relates to what I see going on here in the district. Specifically to the multitude of programs and agreements that come across this dais for the board to vote on from outside entities. And we're seeing another one of those tonight with the K-Ready program. But I've witnessed over the last three or four years, dozens of programs coming before you for a vote. And what I see is, in my opinion, essentially a rubber stamp of these programs. And they all have great stated intentions. We're going to improve reading literacy, we're going to improve math proficiency, ELA proficiency, graduation rates, those are great goals. But what I never see is any metrics in those programs to get back to the superintendent or the board or the public for that matter. You know, as an engineer, we were constantly engaged in what's called continuous process improvement. But without meaningful data, that's impossible to accomplish. I've foia'd the request for data on several of these programs and I get back the same answer. We have no data that shows anything relating to whether this program achieves these goals or not. So again, I just want to share my perspective as an engineer as to how I see you can start to improve these programs and make them accountable to the community and to the students to which this district serves. Thank you.
Thank you, board. My name is Barry Ketchum. My background, I've lived in Mesa for the last 32 years. Both of my children went to school at Mesa District and they graduated from Dobson High School. I myself worked for the district for 24 years and I retired from the Transportation Department in 2017. I just want to comment on the agenda of the flags that we was talking about at the last meeting. I realized that the display of flags in the classroom is a controversial issue. Should we only display the American flag? I realize that the teachers have a right to free speech. Flags are an example of that. What if one or more of your teachers wanted to display a Christian flag or an In Gobbi's Trust flag or even the Ten Commandments? Those teachers have that freedom as well. This is not only about freedom of speech, it is about the needs of our students. Your students need to be educated in the agendas of the teachers. The district is in charge of educating our children. Parents have put their precious souls into our hands and we have to be very mindful of that. It is the parents' will, not the will of the teachers, that is to be taken into It is the parents' will, not the will of the teachers, that is to be taken into account. Parents raise them, we educate them, but what are they being educated in? Many flags evoke strong emotions. Many students may not agree with the agenda on these flags. What if they become angered by them? Classrooms are supposed to be a safe environment. Are they? If we have teachers pushing their own political and personal agendas, does that impede on the education of all of our students? Are these students now angry every time they enter into their classroom? Is the classroom now hostile toward the students we are supposed to be educating? When I went to school, we said the Pledge of Allegiance. If a student could not comply, they sent...
Hi, my name is Callie Thunman. I'm a current Certified Staff Member. I'm an MEA member, and I live within the Mesa Public Schools boundaries. I'm here to speak on behalf of the 11 music camp teachers from this summer who were involved in the Mesa Public Schools Summer Music Camp. Our annual camp had to be restructured during the second week of instruction due to a lack of communication and forward planning. This restructuring caused classes to be consolidated and six teachers to be asked to leave as a domino effect. Our students were not offered all the experiences and opportunities that were promised from our camp. Teachers and families expect the summer programs offered to carefully be considered, planned, and executed. It was a terrible look for MPS when camps were canceled or reorganized within a week of starting dates, or during actual instruction weeks. Our teachers, students, and families deserve our best and not a subpar-planned program. This unfortunately is what happened to the music camp this summer. Registration was closed on May 17th, and we were told on May 30th that our camp had been audited, and we either needed to restructure or consolidate camp, or all of our teachers needed to take a pay cut to $19 an hour. This was after the 11 of us had already been told and agreed upon the working conditions pay of $51 an hour, and we had already created all of our own materials, and we had started teaching on May 28th. As music educators, there have been decisions that have been made that negatively impacted our programs both during the school and during the summer. Unfortunately, this is just one example from this year. So we are asking the Board, moving forward, we would like to see standardized expectations for all summer programs. This includes educators being informed that their positions are dependent on enrollment before committing to the role. Parents should encounter a more user-friendly and streamlined registration process.
Our next three speakers are Leanne Costanzo, Sharon Benson, and Keiko Dilbeck.
Good afternoon, Board, Superintendency, people in attendance. My name is Dr. Leanne Costanzo. I'm a Family and Medicine Physician, I'm Board Certified. I work here in Mesa, I live here in Mesa. And I am still concerned about the conditions in the public schools regarding the use of transgender identities for children without notifying the parents. This is still a problem. I know that there is a current lawsuit that's going on about this, and that you will not discuss it, but I'm gonna continue to bring it up to everybody. I recently heard through third-party that now we have litter boxes in one of the restrooms at one of the high schools. Now, I'm not sure if that's true or not, but I will tell you, that is a phenomenon that is happening across this nation. What you have to understand about these kids is that when they see special treatment being given to students who are saying that they are trans, or they are furry, or they are whatever, that makes them feel less than in the classroom. They're not getting the special treatment that their classmate is getting for having this new special identity. And that's a real problem. Okay? If we wanna do equality of education, then we need to hold everybody to the same standard. You are a human coming to school. You are not to be expected to be able to act out because you think that you are something other than who you are. Okay? That is what psychologists are for. Again, I will instruct you that you are not physicians, and you are not allowed, or are educators allowed, to tell children that they are gender dysphoric. That is a DSM V classification that should only be made by physicians. You should not be indulging in this. You need to explain to them that they have to talk to the parents, and they have to follow the rules of the school. We cannot set up...
Madam President, if you would allow...
Yes, Dr. Forliss.
Mr. Thompson would like to speak to the allegation of litter boxes in our schools.
Madam President, I just wanna share with the public that is not happening in Mesa Public Schools. We do not have litter boxes in our bathrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Benson.
Good evening, Madam President, Governing Board, and Superintendency. My name is Sharon Benson. I'm a multi-stakeholder position person. I'm a retiree now of Mesa. Still the parent of an employee, the grandmother of a student, and candidate for Governing Board in November. Today, I wanna talk about hope. I just spent a weekend, one of the best weekends of the summer, at the Elevate Christian Music Festival. And the theme that I got was hope. I would like to see us be focused on instilling in students hope. Abigail Schreier has just written a book, Bad Therapy. Generation Z is one of the most therapy generations, the most drugged, both illicit and prescription, and yet they're still the most troubled. I would argue that that is because they lack hope. They don't have hope. Now, let's think about their experience since they've been born. Since 2000, they have not known a world without the threat of terrorism or mass school shootings. They are experiencing declining marriage rates. They've experienced two major economic crashes. They've experienced a global pandemic, the infusion of Internet 24/7 with the invention of the smartphone. That seriously affects our girls in particular. Their world is crazy. It's totally crazy. So Abigail Schreier says the therapy is not helping. We consistently are pushing mental health in our schools. I would like to see a refocus. Let's empower families to be united. Let's have strong families, because strong families develop strong children, which develop strong communities.
Hello, esteemed Board and members of Superintendency. My name is Keiko Dilbeck, and I am the very proud Principal at Keno Junior High School. I'm a community member. I am a parent of two students. This is where I choose to live and work. So thank you for your efforts. I wanted to speak to you today about the flurry of activity that even despite the heat and, you know, lack of students on my campus right now, that we are receiving, we're receiving some great attention from Operations. The work that they're doing in this record heat, I commend them so much. They have spent the school year working around students and teachers to make sure learning is happening. But right now, they're just rolling their sleeves up and getting in there, and I appreciate that. And I think it needs to be stated. I know we do have appreciation for our amazing blue shirts, but it needs to be stated over and over again. I also wanna say thank you to HR or whoever is processing PARS that are going through to make sure that other classified staff members who are not getting hours during the summer are able to get hours by serving on cleaning crews or painting crews. Today, I got to interact with a bus driver, and we got to talk about things that are happening on my campus. And it's just great to have that interaction. So thank you for prioritizing those people. As a principal, it does get a little scary in the summer when you don't have the staff. But it's even more terrifying when you're coming back from a summer, and maybe you've lost a classified office staff member because they didn't have those hours in the summer, and maybe they found something during the summer. So thank you for having those processes and those procedures and those opportunities for our staff. And thank you for making sure that my kids get to see their favorite staff members in the office when they return in the school year. Thank you.
Our last two speakers are Kelly Berg and Elizabeth Tanner.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, and Superintendency. I'm Kelly Berg, parent, community member, employee, and Mesa Education Association President. I'm here to give you an update about our Community Education Senior High Summer School Program. Our first session just concluded this past Friday, and the new session started yesterday. I would like to thank Mountain View for hosting our students. Paul Davis in particular has been fantastic as our point of contact. Also, a great big thank you and shout-out to the folks in Operations for making sure we have cool classrooms where learning can happen. Students and parents choose the in-person modality to earn a half-credit in a high school course. Our students are retaking classes because they have failed it previously, or retaking it to earn a better grade. We also have many students who are taking the classes to get ahead, to graduate early, or to open up space in their schedule for an elective class. I'm proud to report that 282 half-credits were earned as of Friday, and another 252 half-credits are in progress. We have students from all six of our comprehensive high schools, as well as students who attend other districts during the normal year. We have amazing teachers and staff who are passionate about our work with students and who love engaging with our summer kiddos. Thank you for making it possible, and thank you to all of those who are within the district that we don't see that make it possible. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, and I appreciate your time, Board Members. My name is Elizabeth Tanner. I'm from Westwood High School. My daughter graduated Mesa High in 2017. I teach, I've been teaching for eight years. I love it, I love my students, and I'm currently teaching summer school at Mountain View. My kids there are awesome, and I want to elaborate on that in-person summer school is critical. We have students there that would not otherwise have attained the credits that they're getting now. They can't, for whatever reason, do the typical or traditional. And it's so great to see those ahag, stult moments in these kids' face and their eyes, the light bulbs going off, and them finally getting that security and feeling that, yes, I can do this, but for whatever reason, something happened, but I can do this. So please, keep in-person summer school, it is critical. Teachers are on the front line, in the mix. Unlike some community members who aren't always in the schools, teachers are there. We're in the schools, we're talking to kids. Some of us high school teachers are talking to 175 kids a day. And that doesn't count the ones that come visit us in our classrooms, because we have snacks. It also doesn't count the ones we've seen over the years just going, "Hey, Ms. Tanner, how's it going?", and giving us hugs and traveling down the hallway. We know what's going on with our kids. We constantly know what's going on with our kids. Happy Pride Month, by the way. Transgender kids, like anybody else, deserve a place. They deserve an open and welcoming community. My classroom, as are many classrooms on campus, as well as other campuses, are very welcoming to any student, atheist, agnostic, gay, straight, whatever. But they know that they are welcome, and it's okay to be who they are and where they are. By the way, the American Psychological Association did come out in support of transgender health for youth. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment for tonight. We now proceed to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. There is not separate discussion of the items. All items listed except for letter G will be considered as a group and will be approved with one motion. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda according to the recommended item for each?
So moved.
Ms. Sears has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis has seconded. Moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote?
A vote in affirmative.
Ms. Sears votes in the affirmative. With a vote of four yea, zero nay, you have approved the Consent Agenda. Would any Board member or member of Superintendency like to spot or comment on any of the agenda items? Seeing none that would like to do that, we'll proceed with the agenda. And it'll take us to action item number seven, which is the Proposed Budget. Sorry, that's right. Thank you very much for the reminder. We go to action item, which was formerly Consent Agenda item 6G. If our Board members would refresh their agenda. So now, the first action item is the Mesa K-Ready Program Agreement, which was formerly 6G on the Consent Agenda. And we do have a community member that would like to address the Board on the Mesa K-Ready Program Agreement, and that is Ed Steele. Mr. Steele, you have three minutes.
Thank you, President Hutchinson, members of the Board, Superintendency. Along the lines of what I was talking about during the public comment, this Mesa K-Ready Program is coming to you. I read through it. I see where the metrics are called out, timeframe, when they're gonna be reported. But those metrics are for the benefit of the city and for the foundation. And I think it would behoove this district to start, let's use this as a pilot program for what I was just talking about. I wanna start off by saying that I support any program that encourages parents to be more involved in their children's education. There's a clear connection between parental involvement and academic outcome. But what I would ask is, if it's not a hindrance to deploying this program, consider putting this off until maybe the next meeting, the vote on this, so that some meaningful metrics can be put in place. There's a Board goal stated on this that says you're gonna increase or improve ELA proficiency. How are you gonna know that that was accomplished? If you're gonna set a goal, also include a way to measure. Did you meet that goal? What is the goal? Is it 3% we're gonna improve it? Is it 20%? You know, it's these kinds of lack of transparency that the community gets upset about, or I get upset about. I'm sure I'm not the only one. So here are some of the questions I would like to see answered before this gets implemented. First off, why is the MPS Foundation involved? Can the city just give the money directly to the district? And I understand that they provide some administrative services and all that, and perhaps that's the reason. Another question, are all the curriculum and materials utilized in this program approved through the normal channels? How much is the district going to spend in terms of money and personnel? And how many parents are gonna be served by this? What objective measurements, again, are in place to assure that the goals are met? And again, if delaying this would severely hinder this program going into effect, I don't wanna ask for that. But if it can be put off for two weeks, and this... But if it can be put off for two weeks, and this looked at with this in mind, I would ask that you would do that. So, thank you.
In order to start discussing this action item, do I have a motion to approve the Mesa K Ready Program Agreement?
So moved.
Ms. Sears has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Would superintendency like to provide some information to the board before we discuss?
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of our governing board. Mesa K Ready is a partnership that was started in 2018 between the City of Mesa and Mesa Public Schools. The way that the program design currently looks very different than when we started in 2018. It started with a digital curriculum and providing iPads to families, and we quickly learned that that was not the way to engage our youngest learners and get them ready for kindergarten. So this has morphed over time, and one of the pieces of information that we collected was the request for parents to become more involved in their child's upbringing and providing them with the education that they needed to get their kids ready for kindergarten. This is always, from its inception, it was always designed as a parent alongside their children in the program. But they were asking for even more. So based on feedback from our families, the program has changed over time, and now it is being supervised through Dr. Matt Strom in community education. It will be shifting over to Mrs. Bocka, our Assistant Superintendent, who, under her portfolio of work, she supervises early learning. So Dr. Matt Strom has an ASU research paper that he can share some data from because it is important that we do collect metrics to know what we need to improve. With that, Dr. Strom.
So one of our program evaluation initiatives in a prior year was to look at Mesa K Ready. I will tell you one of the most difficult parts about early childhood and measuring outcomes is the assessment conversation and how valid are assessments at this age. And I'll link it back to gifted testing. There is a philosophy out there from some school districts to gifted test at a young level, fourth and fifth grade. But if you read the research from Lowman, University of Iowa researcher on gifted testing, most gifted advocates will tell you, listen, the earliest time you want to offer screeners in gifted education is in the second grade because assessment data captured at young ages is very difficult to interpret. And so what I will tell you is a lot of the research done by ASU was judging based on parental feedback loops and small group feedback, what their involvement was with their children. Some of the feedback included that they very much appreciated that they were exposed to early math and early literacy concepts in the program, that they reported that they were taking those early math and literacy concepts home to their children so they could practice those early math and literacy concepts at home. And what we also know is that the parents appreciated the massive amount of parent communication that the Mesa K Ready Program provided them with. So there's great parental communication back and forth. If we want to move into the testing realm of three- and four-year-olds, that's a unique conversation we're going to have to have because it creates a situation from a business perspective of how much is the capturing of data at that level worth the cost at that level? In other words, I'm explaining to you, early kindergarten testing in a lot of districts, early kindergarten testing requires kids to come in, and there's usually a play-based observation of kids for 15, 20 minutes, and a teacher's filling out a rubric. And then the teacher will sit down, and there's usually an early kindergarten test that you'll go through, testing them on whether they can print an A and print a B and put down the numbers 1, 2, 3, and maybe count to 10. And you're testing all these little skills in a one-on-one setting, and by the time you get done, it's 45 minutes to an hour worth of labor time to capture data on one kid, and there's still variance or variability in that data, captured on day one versus captured on day five versus captured on day 10. You might get different outputs from the kid because at that young of an age, there's a lot of variance depending on when and where you capture the data. And so what I will tell you is the ASU group has studied the Mesa K Ready Program. They have, and through our program evaluation team in Mesa, they have suggestions for improvement. We're deploying those suggestions for improvement. The city is very excited to work with us on the suggested improvements that are there, one of which is, we wanted to restructure the time of Mesa K Ready so not only can parents and kids show up for Mesa K Ready, they can also sign up for our preschool programming we offer in the district. And altering those times will allow those parents to then come in and sign up for preschool programming in the district. And we're just constantly looking at evolution and change in the process, and we're excited to stand up this program at Lowell, Stevenson, and it's already running at the Mesa Public School Library for parents. So the conversation around outputs is a unique one, particularly the younger you get at student ages.
Excuse me. Thank you for that information. Board Members, any questions? Yes, Mrs. Walden.
So you had mentioned feedback from parents. So is part of the sort of evaluation of the program, is that set in place for parents going forward to continue to be able to give their feedback and recommendations?
Yes, we already have the survey elements designed, and we have the small group collection of data designed so we can administer that collection of data on an annual basis if the city and the district require that, or on a biannual basis if we require that as well.
Is there a financial cost to the district for this program?
The short answer to that is, if I talk about usage of time of current employees and how we delegate or account for that time, there certainly, we have current employees who are using time to administer the Mesa K Ready Program. It's our matching portion of the program. We give up space and time to administer the Mesa K Ready Program, right? But if you're asking, did we add FTE to get at the addition of Mesa K Ready, the answer to that is no. It was using our current resources in order to allocate their time such that we could administer the program.
And then the foundation funding, do you have anything you can add about that?
So the funding pathway for this is that the dollars that the city receives have to go to a nonprofit organization. And so we used to work with United Way in administering these funds, and United Way has the desire to not be the administrator of the funds, and so we have moved that over to the Mesa Foundation. Thank goodness for their willingness to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walden. Any other questions from board members? Ms. Davis.
Do you know how many students we serve, or families we service at this time? Sorry, that's kind of off.
Ms. Bocka, do you happen to know our goal for next year, an involvement in the three places, or at least the two, Stevenson and Lowell?
So our goal is to hopefully serve 100 families. So we'll be doing the two campuses once a week.
And that is a metric we can certainly easily get back to you, is are we making our goal of servicing, you know, 50 families at each site on a monthly basis? That's a pretty easy measurable, but once again, that's not a student outcome measurable, that is adults showing up measurable. What other element on the research side of things? You know, we read and consume national-level research on preschool education in depth in this district from, you know, if you go back to Abbe Sidarian Project, to Perry Project, all the way up to the New Tennessee projects that are coming out, we consume that research. We understand that high-quality preschool education matters. There's been a redesign of preschool education in this district in the last two years, and that includes the redesign of Mesa K Ready. And so I just want everyone to know, we're keeping our eye on national research and the implications of what it means to help kids out at the preschool level for low-income families on their, not only academic outcomes, but their later-in-life income outcomes. And we understand that the national-level research is sometimes mixed, but the nuances in it are where we pinpoint that high-quality preschool followed by high-quality kindergarten through third-grade educational experiences are extremely important to make the value add of preschool education come to fruition.
Thank you, Dr. Strom. Ms. Sears, do you have any questions or concerns? I know that Mayor Giles visited the City of San Antonio, and this, the program that Dr. Forless mentioned with the digital access and the iPads, that was really questioned whether that was appropriate for Mesa, and I think it lasted a year, and that was about it, that our families wanted much more. And I'm glad to see that the school district has responded to families and the needs, specific needs of our families. We have two schools that are participating. Is that correct? Lowell and Stevenson? That's where the program is available. And, but the third one is inside the Mesa Public Library, where I know that there's a new center that is opening up, and I know the city's very excited about that because we learned about it in the Read on Mesa program that the foundation and the school district is a part of. Very exciting opportunity, family-centered site for early education that I know that they're excited about. I share the concern that, and I understand how it'd be very difficult to assess three- and four-year-olds. I get that. But if the program has been around since 2018, now, obviously, it has evolved, and it seems to me through the ASU study, it will be further evolving. Is it possible for us to track the kids? The kids and how they do say, as Mr. Steele talked about proficiency, well, we have a measurable goal for proficiency at third grade. The board has that goal. Can we see and track the kids? I know that might be really difficult, kids are in and out, but is it possible to see down the road, did the program have the impact that we wanted it to? Is that possible through research?
Oh, but Dr. Strom asked specifically about, is it possible? Yes, and he can go into the details, but is it possible to take a list of children that participated in Mesa K Ready and then take a look at their kindergarten screener, their first-grade screener, second-grade, and third-grade reading scores? Yes, it's possible to do that. What is impossible is to identify the causation that Mesa K Ready impacted the third-grade scores. But yes, we can put the data together. I think some other metrics that I'm very interested in is taking a look at parental engagement. Families that were involved in Mesa K Ready, building those natural skills of being involved and communicating with the school, are there higher levels of parental involvement? And most interesting, the reason that the iPads and the digital curriculum were chosen to launch Mesa K Ready is so that we had something to measure. And we quickly learned, we were measuring all the wrong things, but it was very easy to measure, but it was not appropriate for a three-year-old.
I really appreciate that insight. Dr. Strom?
I did have a quick comment. The thing that makes me excited about such a program, I do understand when we talk about evaluating, but we also know that there's the data that actually speaks to the necessity for that zero-to-five mark, right? That actually says if we put these tools and these things in place. So I don't want it to be lost on, we are providing a service that's based on national data, local data, data that's done within community that's serving a need for the brain development with zero to five. So outside of, say, if we said we didn't have this program, we already know that there's many voids in the community. And so first, I think we need to, one, look at this as a service that we're doing to the community that's already based on data. We have a whole government entity, first things first, that tells us that these types of supports are necessary. So starting off with the premise that we are providing to our community that is very family-centered and focused on the whole child and healthy beginnings and all of that. So I guess in how these children do in the future, we first, I almost applaud our district at having a healthy start mindset and providing this service. Because without these types of services, we already know we're at a deficit, we continue to be at a deficit, and we're paying the costs later. That's why there is a continued to be a national push for us to have K, pre-K programs, and we choose to offer full-day kindergarten, but know zero to five is where we are. So I want us maybe to kind of take the step back about all of the data that's been done to actually say, this is why we're meeting a need. Because I think we're so in meeting the need, now we're trying to delve into not looking at all, and then we have to continue to challenge and actually be presented with the challenging times that's happening because we give kids the best opportunity to start so when life happens. Because we're in a climate where evictions are rampant. We have all of these things happening where families are moving and doing all of these things that impact their children. So looking at this as being that healthy start and saying, and arguably saying that the data to have this is there, it's sound, and it's speaking to the need for what our people we employ tell us over and over, that we need more and more of these services in our community for our children. And I just get so excited that I see the imagery of parents and children working together. And as you know, Marcy, books all around and books galore. So that's what I offered today as I listened to this conversation.
Thank you, Mrs. Sears. Dr. Strom, would you like to add?
Yeah, so, I mean, we're really aware of the research, once again, and what I'll tell you, in terms of judging a program based on outcomes in third and sixth grade, and then actually what some of these projects have done, and that's why we can say things like preschool has an impact on incarceration, preschool has an impact on lifetime earnings and taxable income that those students then generate back for their community. The reason we can say those things is because of the national-level research that's happened. But I will tell you, the gold standard of research is randomized control experiments, RCEs, and most of the research in preschool education is quasi-experimental or lower. And if it's that, you just have to take every element of research, and then you have to synthesize across those elements of research. Whether we do it internally to judge third-grade outcomes or sixth-grade outcomes, we are not going to have a randomized control experiment of kids into these programs because parents are opting into these programs, right? And since parents are opting into these programs, and that's good, there's handover research suggesting out there that the best way to do pre-K is to make sure you have a wide variety of offerings, including enrichment programming, preschool programming, community education programming, and parent engagement programming like this, so that parents can make a choice on what preschool option works for them and their schedule. And what I would tell you is, when you're not randomizing the controlled experiment, it's going to be difficult to judge outcome, even when you have statistical controls on the backside. So synthesizing across these data sets is important. What we know is skill begets skill. That's a Nobel laureate, that's J.J. Heckman. Skill begets skill. You teach a kid a skill, then they get another skill, and then they get another skill. And by the time skill on top of skill on top of skill happens, you have a fluent reader or you have a kid that's fluent with mathematics, and the earlier we can start this with kids, the better off we are. Early intervention, we know this is synthesized across research, early intervention pays, right? Whether that's early intervention for a kid that needs individual education plan, special education services, or whether that's early intervention for a kid that needs advancement, early intervention pays for students in terms of having a payoff for future life value.
You had me at parents make an informed choice. That's critical, and that parents know what their options are, not only the curriculum, but they know what their options are so they can customize the educational experiences for their children. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Kirby, would you please take our vote?
With a vote of four yea and zero nay, we have approved the Mesa K Ready-
With a vote of four yea and zero nay, we have approved the Mesa K Ready program agreement with the city of Mesa. Action item seven B is the proposed budget. And Dr. Forless, I'm going to let you introduce our assistant superintendent and our CFO, who will give us and the public a lot of information about the proposed budget.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the board. We have a very talented finance team made of assistant superintendent Scott Thompson for Business Services, as well as our chief financial officer, Ken Alexander. So the beginning of the presentation, Ken Alexander is going to walk us through the budget portion, and then he will then turn it over to Mr. Thompson, who will walk us through the impact on local taxes. So with that, Mr. Alexander.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, happy to be here to present the 2024-25 proposed budget for the upcoming school year. It's been a rough go of it, it seems like the norm these days is for the state legislature and the governor to adopt the state budget as late as possible, leaves a lot of unknowns for us and the school districts trying to project what's going on. Though overall, I think we did a pretty good job of projecting some things, but there's some things in this budget form, forms that are still not final. We got the final forms four days ago from the Auditor General's office, previously we were working off proposed forms, preliminary forms. So not all complete, but we are using the most current forms that are available to us at this time. So a timeline, we're here today to talk about the proposed budget presented to you. In two weeks, we'll come back for a public hearing to adopt the budget, possibly come back for a December budget revision if we're notified by ADE that we're required to do so. And if not, then we'll come back in May and do the final budget revision. So some funding factors here, MNO increased 2%, that's what we were projecting, that's sort of the inflation factor that went into the budget, is also transportation, a 2% increase. Classroom site fund also increased this year, $34, and a high 700, so it's been that number for a couple of years now, so that may be the new norm, not sure. But that definitely helped to get that increase. And our teacher experience index increased this year. This is the first year in probably the last 10 years our teacher experience index increased compared to the rest of the state, so that gives us a little bit extra funding boost So now, a couple of other things, so for this budget, we included a projected drop of unweighted daily membership by 971 students. You can see it, it's broken out by K8 of 371 students and 912 of 600 students. So one of the things also that is in this budget, that's not in the budget, so it's sort of interesting, but the, the legislature approved one-time funding for district additional assistance or capital, as well as free and reduced price lunch weights. However, since the budget was adopted so late, the Department of Education was not able to come up with numbers yet to put in our budget, so we will be including those numbers when we revise our budget next. So those will still be determined, but those are additional one-time fundings that will be part of this budget for next year. Here's just an overview of our unweighted average daily membership. The, the second column there is the numbers we were at when we adopted last year, so this time last year, you can see on the bottom there, 53,295. We did a December revision that brought it down to 55,554, those are the, the weights we were using. And then just recently in May, we used a 52,335. So we are then continuing to project a, a lower unweighted count down to 51,613 for this upcoming school year budget. But this gives information for each of the, the grade stratifications there that you can see the counts. So big picture summary, these are like budget limits, so MNO, $532.6 million, that's about 1.8 million less than we adopted last year. Classroom site fund is up a little bit from where we were last year due to that increase of $34 that we got per student. Capital, $59.5 million, that one will probably go up a little bit as we get the funding, the one-time funding after ADE calculates it. Bond funds, $16 million, you can see that's a pretty low number, but we are using up our bond funds, and that is contingent upon how much we actually finish this year with. There's a lot of construction projects going on, so technology being purchased, so that's just the budget we think we possibly could spend next year. Adjacent ways budget, $4.5 million. The board may remember, we levied for some money last year, so we still have some money in that fund, so we're not doing a levy this year. I think we have sufficient funds to get us through this year for those purposes. And then finally, federal and state grants, $86 million. Lot of money there for sure, but it's definitely lower than we've had the last three years due to the COVID funds ending. Also, these budgets don't include any carryforward, which we will be determining later in the year and will be revising accordingly. Carryforward, everyone wants to know about carryforward. So the middle column there is a carryforward calculation showing where we were this time last year. So last year when we were here, we had estimated a $41.9 million carryforward for MNO. It ended up being $44 million at the end of the year. Various factors, our ADM numbers won't be final for a couple of months. We also have other changes, spending, we don't know what we're going to totally spend this year, we're still having to close our book, so there was some adjustment there. Far right-hand side shows for this budget, we estimated $41.6 million, and then two question marks, not showing what the, the revised carryforward will be once this year is over completely and ADE does their adjustments as well. Classroom dollar percentage, we're tracking on MNO and classroom site fund, what percentage of our budget is spent in the classroom or set aside to be spent in the classroom? The left-hand side of the screen shows that 74.7% of our budget in MNO and classroom site fund is designated to go into the classroom. And then if you go to the right, you can see the breakdown of that 74.7. You can see 61% of that amount is in instruction, 384 million. 97% of that is budgeted to go to salaries and benefits in our budget. And we have also student support like counselors and then instruction support, instructional coaches, et cetera, make up other classroom dollars in that calculation. So why is this important? Obviously, we want to get as much in the classroom as possible, but this is one of the district's KPIs to spend 70% or more in the classroom. So the 74.7 that we are showing in our budget to be spent meets this KPI, and hopefully we will be spending according to that to still meet this KPI. So here are some highlights of some things that are incorporated into this budget. You can see the first two lines are pay increases. Those are the 4% to teachers and 3% to other staff, split between the MNO fund and the classroom site fund. We also have some transition from ESAR, we're taking these instructional site-based coaches from ESAR and funding them with classroom site fund and instructional improvement fund. And to offset some of those things, we also have some position reductions, so you can see $11 million reduction. So those are the, the big-ticket items that are included in this budget. So a new thing this year in the budget, some of you might remember at the, at the last meeting when we talked, or AFR time for last year, there was a new page for fund balances. So the auditor decided, since we did it on the AFR last year, let's go ahead and put it in the budget forms this year. So they've added a lot more information on fund balances. So not that the pages weren't, more pages were not necessary, but we have a lot more information now. So the, there's fund groupings on that last page, it breaks our funds into general, capital projects, special revenue, et cetera, different fund groupings. Those fund groupings mirror what is in our audited financial statements. So on that last page, we start with the ending fund balance for these groupings from last year. And then you can see all the estimates that we're making on this form, estimating what our expenditures and revenues are going to be for the current year, what we're going to end up at. And then also for MNO, capital and classroom site fund, they're asking us to estimate what next year's total expenditures are going to be and what next year's carryforward is going to be. So again, main thing to take from this is lots and lots of estimates, that's what this page is showing for our fund balances. The last bullet on there, it mentions category for each balance and planned uses. The categories are from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board criteria of how they define what fund balances are, and we'll get to that in a second. So the top line there shows that on our AFR last year for fiscal year '23, we had fund balances across all funds of $300 million. Second line shows what we are estimating our fund balances to be, again, all funds this year, 291.7 million, again, estimate. And for the category estimates, also using the same ones that are in our audited financial statements and the GASB categories, we have restricted of $210 million. An example of that is debt service and our employee benefit trust fund. Those monies are set aside, those are not to be used just for general operations. We have some committed balances of $5 million, those are basically funds that are rolling over for projects that are starting, we estimated we're going to be doing construction projects we're going to be finishing. And anything that doesn't fall in any of these categories goes into an unassigned account, unassigned category. And that is our MNO fund, our Medicaid fund, indirect cost fund, capital fund. So those are a lot of the ones that are the cash-based ones that you see, but those that they are not falling into one of the other GASB categories, they fall into that unassigned. Again, the highlight of this one is that 210 million of the 291 is really considered restricted. And these, these definitions are sometimes difficult, you have to go in and read the definition per GASB, which is not the best thing to do, it's not fun to read GASB pronouncements. And then a lot of times, there's definitions within the definition to try to understand exactly what all these things are. So that is the highlight of that last page. Now on to Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. So I want to take us back real quick on the one-time balances, I want to just foreshadow our '26 conversation. So what the legislature did in this year's budget is they did fully fund us in both what's referred to as the poverty weight, or it's an additional amount based on our free and reduced lunch applications and a measurement of the socioeconomic status of our, of our students, and also our DAA funds. They were basically reduced in the ongoing amount, but then returned to 100% with the one-time payment. What that means is for '25 school year, as Mr. Alexander indicated, we're fully funded for our budget as was anticipated. What's difficult is in '26, we'll be starting at the lower amount without that one-time funding. So for example, in our DAA funds, we'll only get about 75% of that funding to start with. In the poverty weight, we're looking at a cut of almost 37% to that funding as well. So the combination of those two is about $10 million for Mesa Public Schools. Again, not a problem in '25, could be a problem in '26. Thankful to our lobbyists who worked to got, to get trigger language back in, so if state revenues come in higher than expected, that, that funding will get returned automatically. But it just kind of foreshadows that in '26, we might be looking at some budget cuts, really before we even start the session, because they were kind of implanted into the budget this year. So I just wanted to highlight why that one-time funding really matters for us. Not an issue for this year, could be an issue for '26. Okay, so I have the distinct pleasure of talking to you about taxes this year, because taxes are going to be a little interesting. So I'm going to walk you through this and see if, see if we can work this out for everybody. So, next slide. Okay, so first and foremost, our taxes are based on the assessed value of the property within Mesa Public Schools. So you take the boundaries, we talk to the assessor, they send us a report, and as you can see, it's increasing by 4.8%. But again, that's information simply provided to the district by the assessor's office saying, this is what the property within your school boundaries equals. And in this case, we're just over $4 billion. So, we go on to the next. From there, we have to set a tax rate, but we don't set a tax rate. So, and that's one of the things that's very challenging when we present this to the public, is we're going to talk a lot about taxes, on the front of our budget is a proposed tax, but really governing boards do not set tax rates. That is done by the county supervisors, and they are responsible for taxation. We are really just communicating a budget to the county superintendent's office and ultimately the county supervisors that does relate to and becomes a tax, but sometimes they don't even match. Or as both our estimates, both the estimate of what we think we needed as a budget and what we think that's going to do to taxes, the supervisors also look at it, and they might adjust a little bit, but they're still kind of projecting what they think the taxes that are needed to be collected for Mesa Public Schools to cover our budget. And that's all based on equalization, which goes back to our assessment, which says, some of that's going to come from local taxpayers and some of that's going to come from the state. So what can happen, a few years ago, the law was changed where cash balances, as it relates to taxes, were not, no longer to be considered for setting a tax rate. This is relevant because it can result in what has happened in Mesa, we've ended up with a cash deficit of almost $8 million, because we can't levy, we haven't been able to levy up until this point for the deficit. And it's been kind of a small, slow burn of a million this year, $2 million the next year, and it's been kind of growing. And Mr. Alexander, when he came into the role, started approaching the county and said, hey, this keeps growing, how do we make this up? Now, some other districts might be in the exact opposite situation, they might actually have too much cash. And again, it's all based on the idea that we estimated a tax, the county supervisors estimated a tax, and then taxes get collected, but somebody might challenge their tax collection and maybe that's agreed to, so then that amount doesn't come in, and so we get less taxes for that. So again, we're kind of projecting the amount, and then the amount is collected, and sometimes the amount is more and sometimes the amount is less. In Mesa Public Schools, for a few years now, we've been living with a cash deficit. We think this is the year to really approach the county and fix this, because we don't want to see this continue to grow, because it then creates a deficit in the amount of cash we have available to function. So that cash deficit, as we're promoting here, is part of the overall tax calculation you have on the proposed budget, and it's about just a little over an 18-cent increase to collect those funds and basically eliminate that deficit. So that's challenge number one to the taxes for '24, '25. Next slide.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
Is that 2025 estimated impact, is that 18 cents per $100,000 of assessed value?
As, yes, that is the rate that we all, all we do is promote the rate, and then it's basically, that rate will be given to the assessor's office, and that is what comes through on your taxes based on the value of your property at $100,000, yes.
And can I ask one more question before we proceed?
Please, please do.
I want to make sure we're on the same page. So we give the budget, the board supervisors sees the budget, they set the tax rate, and then to try to collect for that, for that budget, but the tax rate has just been slightly less, so we're, so we're not collecting enough to have met the budget over the years.
The tax collections have been a little less than the tax rate should have generated.
Okay, okay, so the rate's fine, but we're getting less than what the rate was supposed to generate?
Exactly.
Okay, but the rate was supposed to generate enough to, to cover the approved budgets?
Yeah, every year, the tax should have covered it, every, in the last few years, for whatever reason in Mesa Public Schools, it just hasn't. And like I said, in other districts, they might have gotten more than they needed. It's, it's all a bit of a guessing game when we establish the rate, and sometimes it works in your favor, sometimes it doesn't. We've ended up with a deficit of $8 million as a result. But it's just because the collections just didn't happen as anticipated. There's really no other better explanation than that.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for the questions. Okay, next slide. So the second challenge to our taxes this year is Quasmir, Quasimire, there's lots of discussion about how to say this, so I'm going to go with Quasimire, because that's what I'm used to saying at this point. There was litigation, there was a court case, there was a successful court case from the perspective of the individuals who brought this case to the county. It was appealed, and the appeal failed, and the, the courts agreed with the, the folks who brought this forward, saying that their property changing from class three to four basically changed the way they should be assessed. That's the simplest way I'm, I'm going to put it. If you want to delve into tax law and how this all works, there's lots of stories and articles out there about that. But I'm not a tax person, I'm just going to tell you that this is a ruling that is coming our way, and by law, we are required to address it. So this particular case is just Maricopa County, and thankfully, because it happened just before, because of the ruling and the failure of the appeal kind of happened, right, coinciding with the budget getting finalized, we were able to get House Bill 20- coinciding with the budget getting finalized, we were able to get House Bill 2909 in place, which addresses some things that were needed so that the school districts could deal with the liability that was created through the judgment. And one of the main issues that was dealt with there is, at one point, and you might have heard of other districts who passed resolutions by the governing board to levy, or to ask the state to recalculate their state aid, because state aid is based on your assessed valuation, so when it changes, it means the amount of state aid you got was wrong. So, now with House Bill 2909, that is happening at a state level, and none of the boards, I think it's 52 school districts, have to pass this resolution. We're very thankful that got put into law, because I think it would have been even more confusing for the public to understand why a board would pass a resolution to do something you're not even really responsible for.
Yeah.
Next slide. Why do I say that? Because, and I want to thank Member Walden for calling and asking me some questions, because it kind of clarified some things as I thought about this presentation. And what I really want to emphasize this evening is, this is not your responsibility, but by law, it's your responsibility. You had nothing to do with it, we had nothing to do with setting this, you know, class three, class four, we had nothing to do with the lawsuit. But, in ASRS, A-R-S, 4216214, it states, "The affected taxing jurisdictions," read that as Mesa Public Schools, shall, it's a shall, in law, when it's a shall, that means you do it, you don't get a choice, right? Include in their budgets, that's what we're doing this evening, for the next fiscal year, the proportional amount of the judgment for which each is liable. So we've been informed by the county that we're liable for a little over $11 million, as they've currently estimated the impact. So that means, and I don't know that they fully finalize the liability, because as I understand it, they still have to rerun nine years' worth of these evaluations to come up with the finals. But the bottom line is, right now, we've been told it's 11.2 million. The previous slide said the state aid will be recalculated, so that means the state aid will pick up the portion that the state aid would have in those past years. Luckily, or as that works out for our district, that's about half the amount that is, so it's a little over 5.5 million. We're hoping, we don't have all these final calculations, all of these are estimated. But with state aid being recalculated, the only parts that we're going to be responsible for are our local taxed items. And so the next slide, we will show you that is the override and the bond elections that were approved by our voters. Because again, these also are dependent on the assessed valuation, the tax that was implemented by the district over the years reflected what the assessor said, the value of our property's worth, that is being changed. So now we have to deal with the liability that's been created with the change, because the folks who won their lawsuit are going to get paid back. Basically, as you saw that law, they're going to just take the funds from us, and then we have to pass enough of a tax to recoup those dollars. And again, I say that, I shouldn't say it that way, because we don't pass a tax. We have to establish a budget and a tax around the idea that those funds have to be recouped. Very frustrating situation, because I don't, the district has nothing to do with any of this, other than we're a taxing entity. But referring back to that law, this is the way things work, as has been established in, for many, many years, on what a judgment looks like, how it gets paid back. This has been done for decades in Arizona. So unfortunately, we're left to pick up the pieces and deal with it, and that means that we're looking at about a 12-cent impact for the portions that were just local to us, which is the override and the bond. The other thing that was positive about the law changes, that 2909, there will be a statement on the taxes, because I doubt lots of people are going to come and listen to this presentation about the taxes. But your tax rate includes an increase to cover the cost of the tax refunds ordered in the class action litigation. So there's some explanation that's going to come out. In my ideal world, the county would just have a line item for judgment and tax everybody and not even get us involved. But apparently, that's not possible, because of the way the law's written, and it was quite frankly, just a little too complicated to fix any more than what we got fixed in the last few hours of the budget with the state legislature. So we were thankful we got a few things addressed, because this is a big deal. You know, this is taxing folks who really may or may not have any benefit, or have anything to do with any of this, all of us that are Mesa Public Schools taxpayers. And it's not just us as an entity. Please understand, any entity that you, you get property taxed. If you go back and look at your, your property taxes, anything, the community colleges, anything you see on there that's part of your property tax, they're going to have this too. And so it's compounding, which is a little frustrating, meaning you're going to get taxed by the school district, you're going to get taxed by the community college, you're going to get taxed by anybody who's been caught up in this litigation and affected by it. And it's not equal among districts, because maybe Mesa didn't have a lot of folks going from level three to level four, and maybe another district does, so their liability is greater. So it's not even equitable throughout Maricopa County. You know, in the past, I've seen large taxes like this. There was a pipeline Western litigation years ago, and the state stepped in and actually funded the solution, but it was a statewide problem that was resolved. This is unique, I've never seen it just countywide. So, I'm thankful that the state's addressing the state aid side of it, but the state did not step in and say, plus the state's got a deficit itself, right? So they're not in a real good budget situation to save us. But it would have been nice to, to maybe have had the state step in and just take care of this. I don't know if that's even fair, because then all the state taxpayers in Arizona are paying for, for this miscalculation. But the bottom line is, there was a mistake, it's been corrected, and somebody's got to pay for it. And that's the way this all is kind of shaking out. So the last slide, what does that look like to our taxes for next year? The good news is, despite all these individual increases, we're looking at a little over a 43-cent decrease in our tax rate for next year. So taxes in 2025 budget estimate, again, we're estimate, will get finalized at the supervisors. It may match what we're showing you tonight, it might be slightly different, probably pretty close. We've been pretty good within a few cents of what they ultimately set it at. Assuming we've gotten all this quasi-mire information correct, and assuming there aren't some other things yet to come, because it does seem like the information's coming out, you know, almost daily on, on changes to all this. So, at this time, this is our best estimate of what the tax impact. We feel very strong that regardless of whatever comes out of all this, our final budget will have a lower total tax impact to our taxpayers. That's our estimate. We'll see what August and the supervisors bring when they finalize. That's quasi-mire, and that's our, and that's our taxes. More than you've ever wanted to know, tried to simplify as much as possible. It is a very complex issue that I have spent weeks and days trying to understand myself. One of the things I will say that is interesting in all of this is you have multiple entities. You have the assessor's office, you have the treasurer's office, and you have the county superintendent's office. We have been taking our direction from the county superintendent's office. The county superintendent's office has been trying to get their direction from the assessor and the treasurer, and I think they're all figuring this out as they go along as well. So we, that's when I say we get updated quite frequently with new information. They just passed the state budget, they're still looking at the impact of all of that. So we may still see some updates in between tonight's proposal and July's adoption. We might not, and we might have gotten it as close as we can, and it'll be just the way it is. But I just want to really emphasize, it's a fluid situation, we're giving you the best information we have, and we're hoping that we've made it as understandable as we can to the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Thompson. It was a very thorough presentation. I know you hit every question that I had on my, on my list, and I thank Board Member Walden for asking the questions that, so that we all got the answers that we had questions to. But before we discuss anything further, I need a motion from my colleagues to adopt or approve the proposed fiscal 2024-25 budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Walden has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis has seconded. Now that it's been moved and seconded, is there further discussion by board members?
Mr. Thompson, what are some of the reasons that we have a tax decrease? And actually, before you answer that, so it sounds like we've got two things that are sort of adding, but not really adding, because we're going to have a tax decrease. So there's the under collection, so we have a rate, we didn't collect enough money from that rate, and then there's the lawsuit, and the law says that with, with judgments, that that comes out of the property taxes, and we're required just to have a budget that covers that judgment. But then overall, we've got the 42-cent reduction in taxes. So what are some of the, like, reasons, because the math isn't making sense in my head, that we're adding but subtracting?
So the overall decrease, as you looked at that last slide, is in our secondary rate. Our primary rate is pretty much equal to what it was the year before, and that is what you would anticipate, because assessed value went up, and our budget is a slightly larger with that 2% increase, even with the loss of students, and so, so we're collecting, so people are always like, wait a minute, the budget went up and the taxes go down, how does that work? Or stays the same. Well, the budget went up and the assessed value went up, so it kind of covers it, in the sense of the amount of tax needed to, to cover the larger budget. Now, I always disclose that if your value of your property goes up and the rate stays the same, you are paying overall more in tax, right? Because you're paying for a larger assessment on your home. But the rate, you know, the only thing the district has any say in at the end of the day, and very little of that, is, is what the rate might look at. So the primary rate is not changing. What you're seeing is our secondary rate changed, and so that's the collection for the debt service of both the override and the bonds. And basically, the amount needed for those has decreased, so we are seeing less of a need for tax to cover that.
Okay. And then this, and then the payback of this judgment, again, this was the assessor's office, the county superintendent's office, and then of course, the board of supervisors that were sort of responsible for, well, it was this assessor for the over-collection of taxes, but now there's a judgment, and all the districts have to, to pay, and under the law that you quoted there, pay that through the property tax. And that, so we don't get to decide how that's paid back, that's been determined for us.
Absolutely. That, at the end of the day, this was an assessment, assessor's office issue. That's where this originates. So the assessor made a judgment on how they thought certain changes in the level of, of your value of your property classifications should occur. They'd been doing it for a long time that way, somebody challenged it, the court ruled, no, we think you're doing this wrong. And so now the assessor has to calculate, okay, recalculate everybody who was wronged by that assessment, and then pay them back. And as a result of that, the law that I, I shared in the presentation then says, basically, that then comes through to, they deduct that straight out of the cash that we have available, and we have to make up the difference. That's the way the law is written. Can like it or not like it, it is the law of the land, that's what we have to follow, and that's what we're doing this evening.
Thank you for the explanation.
Mm-hmm.
Does the board have any other questions or concerns or discussion? Mr. Alexander and Mr. Thompson, I really thank you for your diligence and your thoroughness in the presentation.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion on the table. Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote? With a vote of four yea and zero nay, you have approved the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 Let's go on to our next agenda item, which is 7C, membership with the Arizona School Board Association. Is there a motion to approve membership with the Arizona School Board Association in the year 2024-25?
So moved.
Mrs. Sears has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis has seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve membership with the Arizona School Board Association. We have two members of the public that have signed up to speak on this agenda item, no, excuse me. Two members of the public, that's correct. Is that what you have, Ms. Davis? Thank you very much for checking up on me. And I would like those two members of the public to approach the podium, and you each will have three minutes to speak on this agenda item. That is Ms. Marilyn Wilson and Mr. Michael Hughes.
Thank you, board members. I noticed that this ASBA item was on the agenda tonight, and I just wanted to come and share a couple comments with you. First of all, I commend you for your public service. I spent 16 years on the Mesa Governing Board, sitting at meetings, and many people don't realize how many volunteer hours you are putting in, listening to people like me, as well as your staff visiting schools and all the materials that you read. So I commend you for that. I'll just say, during the 16 years that I was involved, I had a very, I had very positive experiences with Arizona School Boards Association, beginning as a candidate who knew very little about what I was getting into, except that I had a great desire to help kids and be involved in public education. I went to one of their seminars and received materials, even that helped me at that early stage, some of the language and that helped me greatly. Going through the years of my board, and even afterwards, I've gone to some of the meetings, I particularly found value in the legal conferences and the legislative ones. Some policy help, I found that our own district people were great, but it was also nice to hear from another source. And then to go to meetings and get to know some of the other board members, see how they were working together as boards or not, and trying to learn how to solve some of our situations. So I know it's one of the many decisions you make, there's money involved, organizations can always be improved, and I would encourage you to go ahead and join for at least this one year. So, thank you. If you have any questions, be happy to chat with you.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me okay? My name is Michael Hughes, and I too echo Marilyn's comments. I am very proud to say that I had the opportunity to serve on this board for 20 years, and it was an honor and a privilege. Also, I am a past president of the Arizona School Boards Association. What I would like to just share very briefly, very candidly, is I, I don't want to come up and say all of the things that Arizona School Board Associations can do for members and the, school board members in the community. I found their services to be very, very helpful and invaluable. But I would also like to say that, as you know, they have gone through a lot of turmoil and a lot of negative press in the last year, year and a half. And candidly speaking, I think in many ways, deservedly so. With that being said, I would like you to know that I'm here tonight, because I have seen tremendous change in ASBA in the last several months, that is all positive. I am proud to tell you that they have pulled in past presidents to get guidance and to, for lack of a better way of saying this, right the ship. I am very proud to let you know that they've never done this before. I am very proud to let you know that they've never done this before, but I am on the search committee as a past president for their new executive director. We are down to three finalists, and I can assure you that the people that are being considered are very strong and will provide the leadership necessary to move ASBA forward. I also believe that they have posted two additional positions, they have brought back leadership positions that was very instrumental and very helpful, where they were providing very strong services, and they have posted the legal position that they will bring in. I say this because Mesa has been a very strong partner with ASBA, and ASBA needs Mesa. They need to move forward with what their challenges have been. They have shown a tremendous amount of, I think, recognition and acknowledgement that they have had to improve, and they are making the necessary steps. And I want you to know personally that I have been a part of that, and I have watched what they have done the last six months to a year. And I believe that they are in every step moving in the right direction. And I believe that the partnership that they have with you and that you have with them can be sustained and can move forward in a very positive direction.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion by board members?
So we spent a lot of time moving over to the trust, and with the trust, we have board docs, is that correct? Any member of superintendency can jump in too, but we, so we have board docs, we have our policy services. Does the trust also do any board training?
We have an expert from the trust here, if she would like to come to the podium and talk about training.
Awesome, thank you.
Forecasting.
Madam President, Ms. Walden, the, I work, have dual roles, I'm both with my law firm, Guest Rosenfeld, which is the capacity I'm with you tonight, but I also am a consultant for the trust. The trust does provide a seminar for board members, it's called the Policy Governance Summit. This year, it's going to be held on Thursday, August 26th is the date, and it's a one-day seminar.
Awesome, thank you. So it seems like, and I appreciate the public's comments about the Arizona School Board Association, but we're looking at, you know, dollars, right? Like, we've made changes in our budget, I think some of the, like, the money that we're using for ASBA membership, we could use towards student fees, you know? We made a change that we would cover the cost of student fees. There's money that the district is on the hook now for that was, they weren't expecting until that passed. But if we renew our ASBA membership, we're basically paying money to get the same services that we're already getting from the trust.
I appreciate the opportunity, Madam President, to speak on this topic, as the most veteran person on the board right now. I believe that training that the Arizona School Board Association offers is key and instrumental. One of the things that happens with board members a lot of times is they don't have the training, so the protocols, or even the operations that happen at the dais sometimes go wonky and go off track because we don't have that training. As a board member, there are many things that come in front of you, and the public, you are holiness to task, to understand all of those things that come before us. Most of us have a very different day job, that we are not doing policy, we're not doing all of the things that we need to become many experts at when it comes to governing and governing well. And those things don't happen by osmosis, they don't happen in a vacuum, they don't happen because we have a superintendent who is very well capable, but it's not the superintendent's job to actually train and upscale the board members. So as Member Walden talked about the redundancy, it's much more than a one-day seminar that is offered by Arizona School Board Association. It's that continual learning, if people tend to, want to stay tuned to that, and you have from your nuts and bolts that happens once you are elected. And as our esteemed community member and former board member Marilyn Wilson spoke to, is having that resource while you're actually employing on the auspicious and adventurous journey of becoming a school board member. So you have that, and then, once you earn the position, where do you go from there? Right? And there's many things that happen with state law and governance. One of the things that I think is lost on people a lot is the Arizona School Board Association has a critical role, working with the legislature, in keeping school board members aware of all of those new laws that come up, and sometimes being at the forefront of letting school board members know, this is what's happening, is your district in compliance? Yes, we have a law person who's working on and has been working on the entire year updating these policies, and as the trust comes alongside and says, here are the things, it's important for school board members to understand that. And the only opportunity we have to understand and learn those things are outside of a meeting. Those things don't happen here while we're up here making decisions. You need time to actually process and think all of that information. So I do want you to know, that's why I'm, despite all of the different things that's happened, it's been a learning opportunity, and I believe I am stronger and a stronger governing partner that is thoughtful and really can consider those things that come before me because of what I've learned with, in partnership with Arizona School Board Association, and would have learned from all the other people who are school board members. Because there's not a time where something complicated comes up where I can't call, pick up the phone and call someone that I've met at a convening, whether they presented, or another school board member, that I know these types of challenges, because there's usually nothing new that happens, but there's someone who I can't call because of my affiliation with Arizona School Board Association to help this district. So I, as we think about it monetarily, it's, it won't have an impact of paying for these school fees that was brought up, it's because it's a very different amount of money, it's not even a small, it's not even 30% of what's needed to cover that, or 10% of what's needed. So I do want to place a value on being able to govern well with knowledge and understanding of what your job is and what you need to do as a professional in this role.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
I appreciate, yeah, first, I appreciate those comments that were made tonight. Just looking, what do we use right now from ASBA that we would, we would miss? You know, our policy is our big thing with the policy bridge, so what, what would we lose?
I think some other things that we would, well, I, being an historian, I appreciate that before I make a decision, that I have a wide variety of perspectives, and policy is one of the most important things that a board member does. And I certainly have appreciated the trust and the expertise of the trust. Arizona School Boards Association has been involved in policy, the policy bridge for decades. That type of expertise, I think, is also warranted, as well as our own, our own council, and Mesa being involved in policy. But I think of all of the things that I get from, from ASBA, the legislative priorities, the e-news, the journal we get. When, when I go to the conference, this was the conference program that I went to in December, I was able to attend sessions on dual enrollment, cybersecurity, academic engagement, preparing Arizona students for college and career success, meeting the needs of the teacher shortage, empowering tomorrow's leaders, supporting native students in Arizona schools, navigating the superintendent selection process, superintendent evaluation. Those were, those are actual topics that we talked about in our conference. The ASBA has the expertise to make us board, better board members. And I just want to echo what board member Sears has said, and if Dr. O'Reilly was here, he would say, I'm pretty sure he would say the same, because we've been very active in ASBA because frankly, I mean, I was a classroom teacher, but we approve over a half-billion-dollar budget. We have to hire and evaluate the CEO of this district, and we have to know school law, we have to know school finance, as well as curriculum. It's, 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 it's a pleasure, and I can't, I loved how you said that, Mike, you know, that you had the privilege and the honor of serving as a school board member, but by golly, we've got to do it well. And, and it's an awesome responsibility, thank you. And, and I believe that the Arizona School Boards Association promotes and propels us into the future and supports us as school board members, particularly with professional development. I can, I can show you all of the manuals that I have here, that I use as my bibles when I'm trying to make decisions and making sure that we're doing the best job we can for our kids.
So it seems like the benefit where we have these organizations is for policy writing and for policy review. So if we have migrated all of our policies to the trust, then the ASBA has nothing to offer us for our policy review or policy help, we're going to be going to the trust. So we're just, we're doubling up on services, we're paying an additional $30,000 a year to go with ASBA for policy bridge, board docs, district membership that we have through the trust. So they're not going to help us with that. We have, the district has our own lobbyists, we have internal counsel, Casey King said in a meeting, I think it was two months ago, that she didn't see any reason to continue to stay with ASBA when we moved to the trust. We have outside counsel, we have very qualified superintendency right here on the dais, and people that can help explain things in the district and educate the board members. There's nothing in this $30,000 that meets any of our board goals that has anything to do with student outcomes, this is just the board saying, you know, we want to pay $30,000 so we can then spend more taxpayer money so that we can go to training. There's other organizations that do training, the Arizona Coalition of School Boards is only $25 a year, which I paid out of my own pocket, because it's 25 bucks, and they have all sorts of training every month that you can do to help make you a better board member. $30,000 a year for policy services, we're already paying for policy services. This is just, we're going to pay money for services we don't need because we want to go to training. And I can't think of anything that is more selfish than that. Like, if there's other ways, there's lots of ways that you can be a good board member than to just spend more district money on something for services we're not using. And I just want to remind the board that it was the National Association of School Boards that ASBA falls under, that called Parents Domestic Terrorists, and asked the DOJ to investigate parents for speaking out at school board meetings.
Yes, at this point, I agree that we're going to disagree on what we, but first of all, I do want to make sure that I'm, that we have some accuracy with what we're talking about. That $30,000, as you brought that to the dais to actually talk about the money, you have in there board docs versus the community documentation diligence. So what you're paying for with Arizona School Board Association is not that $30,000. So I'm, so what we're asking and what we're debating here, you have something in front of you that has a breakdown what the total cost is. So that's the first thing I want to speak to. And again, as we evaluate this, and you, to me, erroneously said that our legal counsel said this is not something that we need, we spoke to policy, and you continued to say that the only thing that we're using this for is policy. And I go forward to say, it's about learning and being able to do this job well, and being informed and not doing this job from a place of ignorance. If you're going to do this job well, like you're saying there's other organizations, but people who serve in this job and have served in this job well, has taken the time to go to the classes, be informed, and understand. One of the reasons why we have an extension of our meetings is sometimes the questions that are asked because the knowledge is not available to, or not accessed. So taking the time to go to these meetings and to actually be attuned ourselves to someone who has master's degrees, I value being able to learn and understand how to judge those things that come before me. Yes, I have the resources here and our superintendency, but as you often mentioned, the time that we get to talk to each other and to get informed in this board meeting is not enough to be able to understand the complexity of all those things that come before us. So with that said, to invest in having a knowledgeable board, I don't believe that it's a waste of time, I don't think, because it is time, that we invest in doing this away from our families, and we do it because we care about all students in our district and making sure that we don't leave out critical missing pieces. Like, right now, as we go forward to look at everything that we're doing with security, that conversation starts with what's happening, not just in Arizona, but nationally, when it came to metal detectors, when it came to all of the things that our citizens care about, we went out and we went to Arizona School Board Association and to these different places to get the knowledge, to be well informed. So when we do spend that money, we know what these things are. And there's, just, these things don't happen for, in osmosis. So it's not just the policy, it's policy, but also understanding all the other myriad of things that come in front of us that we're spending millions of dollars on. We wouldn't want someone to run the district without education, and I think that's what, that's what's being asked.
Yeah, well, and your training hasn't helped you understand my questions because you continue to redirect whatever I say into some other argument. I have not said that we run the board in ignorance. There's other training, the trust offers us training, the district offers us assistance, there are other organizations that offer training, the Arizona School Board, the Arizona Coalition of School Board, there are other ways that we can get training that are cost-effective, that have no cost to the district. And, you know, you mentioned the master's degrees, yes, I did go to graduate school too in the master's program, I was hired by ASU as a teaching assistant and a research assistant, I am more than educated enough for this job. But I'm saying that we be respectful of the taxpayer money and not pay for a service to provide services that we're already paying for, that's just a basic argument. We certainly want our board to be educated and go out and get other training, there's lots of avenues to do that, let's find one that doesn't call parents domestic terrorists. I think that would be a good start.
All right, thank you. Okay, let me, let me make sure that we've got clarity on some issues. The $30,000, it would include the ASBA policy bridge, board docs, our board docs that we use to run our meetings and to inform the public comes from ASBA. And our membership allows us to access training. And so the policy bridge is 5220, the board docs is $9,000, and the membership is $14,930. I just want to make sure that that is clear, that the, the costs are very clear to the public. Also, I do want to correct some information in that when the National School Board Association made that statement, the Arizona School Board Association did not agree with that approach and actually disaffiliated from the National School Board Association. So to say, to lump in the Arizona School Board Association with the national is really not a valid point. really not a valid point. Because, because as I think former board member and president Mike Hughes said, mistakes are made, but we are not in an organization that is afraid to correct those mistakes and to improve. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to address the point about asking questions in the meeting to Mrs. Sears' comments, that I think it is more than appropriate to bring discussions into the meeting, into the public meeting. And it seems in those comments and other comments that continue to get made, that there's some kind of issue that people have a resentment about asking questions in the meeting. I'm just going to reiterate, I'm going to continue to ask as many questions as I feel are important to be asked in the meeting, regardless of what gets said outside of the meeting.
Okay, I appreciate your comment, but we need to stick to the motion that's on the floor. Ms. Davis has a question.
I appreciate knowing that ASBA is making some changes, as Mike explained. But can we, if we are not a part of ASBA, can we attend the, the trainings, not being, not being a part of that? Could we, is there a different fee? I can see, I can see in our spreadsheet, and I don't know if everyone else can, we have a discounted rate because we are part of it, is the same thing with trainings. Could we still attend a training without being a part of it?
Yes, we could. We would have to pay a higher fee. We could, we couldn't, we can do that. However, we would not have a say in the organization. We would not have a say in, in the, in the establishment of legislative priorities. We would not have a say in also the, the program development. I mean, this doesn't, the, the programming and the, the topics that are available at conferences, whether it's the law conference, or the, the annual conference, or any of the multitude of virtual conferences, those come out of members' requests. And with, with membership, you've got privileges. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote? With a vote of two yea and two nay, the recommendation to approve membership fails. Our next agenda item is to go to executive session. And our executive session is going to be held in this room. So we are going to take a five-minute recess, and the executive session, only those who are a part of the executive session will be in the meeting. The rest of the folks that have been observing the meeting will have to leave this room. You don't have to leave the building, but you have to leave this room, because executive session is only for the board members and those involved in the executive session. So we'll take a five-minute recess. I, I do want to make mention that the board will come back, and we will vote publicly on the action taken. So you are welcome to, to remain here in the building, but you cannot remain in this room during the executive session. Thank you.
Do we vote? We need to vote to go to executive session.
Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Ms. Davis has moved. Is it, there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Walden has seconded. It's been moved and seconded to move into executive session. Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote? Mrs. Walden, did you vote, ma'am? You voted, Ms. Davis? I did too. Okay, with a vote of four yea, zero nay, we are in executive session.
We're back. The board is now back from executive session. And we would ask Council Jennifer McLennan to present the options to the board that the board has at this time to take action.
Thank you, Madam President. The board has two options. The board may move to deny the appeal, which would have the cause and effect of upholding Mr. Wing's administrative recommendation. That's one option. The second option is that the board may choose to uphold the appeal and then issue further direction, and that would have the cause and effect of granting the petitioner's request to pursue disciplinary action against one or more of the four certificated individuals.
Excuse me. In order to have, in order to have discussion, we need to have a motion on the floor.
I'll make it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sears. We'll make the motion at this time.
Madam President, I make a motion to deny the appeal of Chris Hamlet against the four members stated in the appeal.
Mr. Hamlet, please. Yeah, I can do that, sir, and I'm happy to do that. Please, would you refrain from interrupting? Thank you. Okay, so Ms. Sears, I'm, what I'm hearing you say is that you move that the governing board deny the appeal filed by Mr. Chris Hamlet pursuant to governing board policy KLD. Is that, that's the motion that you're making?
That's the motion.
Okay, that is the motion that Ms. Sears has moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Davis has seconded that motion. Is there any discussion of the motion?
I would just like to discuss, in reading all the documentation, I don't agree with all four parties that were named in the complaint. I don't feel like that all four parties had responsibility. That being said, I do believe that Chris Hamlet's First Amendment rights are being silenced and that there's a concerted effort to silence him and prevent him from being able to attend events or meetings.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion. Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote? With a vote of three aye and one nay, we have denied Mr. Hamlet's appeal pursuant to governing board policy KLD. That is all the business before the board for this governing board meeting of June, of June 25th. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ms. Sears has moved to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Davis. Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote?
Ms. Sears votes in the affirmative?
Ms. Sears votes in the affirmative. With a vote of four zero, we are adjourned. Thank you all for attending.